Good. I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting for August 8, 2024 to order. Prior to going to invocation, I think it's worth stating we need to be thinking about our friends and our neighbors in surrounding areas dealing with the storm. Obviously, the tornadoes have kind of touched down in Lewisburg and Rocky Ford and surrounding areas. A lot of people are struggling right now and thinking of safety, so we can just kind of remember those guys. And we said that, that's all that I turn over to you for invocation.
Gracious Father, have been create all things, the whole things. Father is our mayor, he said, Lord. Storm has brought devastation to some of our neighbors and their family and friends in this area. It didn't catch you by surprise. But Father, it did us. And so right now, we know that we have neighbors who are grieving because it's been loss of life. Father, we pray, Lord, in their grief, that you would give them comfort, Lord. Father, we know there's several who have lost property. Property has been damaged, Lord. And Father, we ask to be given the strength that will help. And Father, we know there is even some doubt without power tonight, Lord. And Father, even there, there might be darkness when the sun goes down, Lord. Give them light and your soul for King God. So Father, we ask for bless this community, give mercy to us, Lord. Father, comfort, those who need to be covered. Father, continue to bless this community of young people. Father, for those who are still sick and family members who are sick, Lord, we ask you to continue to bless them, Lord. Bring them to help, Lord, and bless them, Lord. And Father, just unite this community in just a special way that only you can do. We will thank you, Lord. It's in Christ that I pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Sure.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? There are none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jim is approved. Moving along, we have a proclamation for the 2024 National Night Out. We thought it was gonna be tomorrow. Debbie had other plans, so we had to change the date a little bit. But I would like to read the proclamation into record. And proclamation of the town of Youngsville, North Carolina, National Night Out 2024. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program called National Night Out, which is celebrated by communities in August and in early October. And whereas the town of Youngsville and the Youngsville Police Department are celebrating National Night Out on Friday, August 16, 2024. And whereas, the annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the town of Youngsville to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas, it is essential that all citizens of the town of Youngsville be aware of the importance of crime programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drug, and violence in the town of Youngsville. And whereas, police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Therefore, I do hereby call upon all citizens of the town of Youngsville to join the town of Youngsville Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 41st Annual National Night Out on August 16, 2024. Further, let it be resolved that I, Fonzie Allen Flowers, do hereby proclaim August 16, 2024 as National Night Out in the town of Youngsville, Franklin County, North Carolina. We're proclaiming this 8th day of August, 2024. All right, moving along, we have a Campo presentation on Blueprint for Safety Plan Update and presentation by Campo VHB. Are they in attendance remotely here?
Yes, Mr. Lord.
Okay, perfect.
Well, good evening, and thank you all for offering us the opportunity to give the first Blueprint for Safety Local Government Presentation in the Campo region. My name is Kenneth Withrow. I am with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, and Ms. Lauren Blackburn with VHB will give the presentation for the Blueprint for Safety. Just want to give you background real quick with regard to this particular project. We launched this project in 2024, and we have, since the launch, have had a workshop. We've had various technical advisory team meetings, as well as pop-ups that have occurred throughout the summer beginning in June. And of course, we'll be a part of Youngsville's National Night Out next week. The goal is to create a plan that can be utilized by the MPO in determining good safety metrics that could be applicable, and local governments can use this plan as a tool for future projects should they pursue those in the coming years. With regard to this particular project, VHB is at the forefront of creating safety plans, particularly throughout the state, and have worked with NC DOT in creating the Highway Safety Plan. And without further ado, let me hand this off to Ms. Lauren Blackburn, who will give the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Kenneth. All right. Should I just give you guys the... There you go. Somebody's reading my mind. So a quick overview, this can be a relatively short presentation, and we do have a pause near the end for just a little bit of discussion with you all. I'm gonna give an overview or an introduction to the safety plan and the process. We're gonna recap what we've been conducting as part of what we refer to as the first phase of this plan overall. And then I'm gonna pause and ask you guys a couple of questions, and then maybe a few slides afterwards for next steps. Go ahead.
Lauren, the font is a little hard to read on the one that the commissioners have. Let me see if I can quickly select others and change them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's all very pastel compared to our normal... Do you want me to... I can share my screen with that?
You're welcome to try. I'd like to see what happens.
Okay, all right. Let me go ahead and put it in presentation mode. All right, where are my teams? Okay. All right. Did I successfully steal from you?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so I'm gonna pass through that. You know, the main reason that this safety plan is a really important thing for the region to perform is because loss of life is an unacceptable outcome when it comes to roadway safety. We firmly believe that fatalities on roadways are truly preventable, but it will take a lot of work. However, unfortunately, over the last five years or so, we've seen numbers like what you see on the screen here, with nearly 200,000 crashes total occurring across the entire Campo region, about 2,700 of those resulting in what we refer to as serious injury crashes, and about 650 or more resulting in fatalities. And it is a multimodal safety plan. You know, when we're thinking about this, these are, of course, more than numbers. They're children, family members, neighborhood, community members who have lost their lives, families who have lost loved ones, or they may have experienced a really serious outcome or injury which may be debilitating. So this can really leave a very strong imprint on the community. So it's important that we do the safety planning work, not only because we want to address those numbers and improve the safety metrics, of course, but there's also a lot of opportunities for getting some of these funding, these types of improvements that we'll look into in the plan funded in the near future. One of those opportunities is through the US DOT. They have a lot of discretionary grants right now, and one of those is referred to as the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program. You may have heard of it. This safety plan that we're creating with Campo, including all of the jurisdictions in the region, will set up all of you in a... to a position to be able to pursue these types of grants if you're interested. So this is a great opportunity for us to be working on these types of safety plans. This is in keeping with the US DOT's National Roadway Safety Strategy. They have been really focused on roadway safety over the last several years. And as Kenneth mentioned, the North Carolina DOT just recently completed and updated their Strategic Highway Safety Plan. That includes a number of emphasis areas and a number of strategies and approaches that they want to take to address the safety needs across the state. And it is really important that we plug into that Strategic Highway Safety Plan through this effort as well, because that aligns your community and the Campo region as a whole for some of the safety funding that is programmed at the statewide level. And then, of course, there's other plans happening. Campo's leading a number of plans. We'll talk about one in particular, but this plugs into other types of planning effort. It can help improve, identify safety needs. And we also want to be mindful about what the public has to say about this plan as well as others. One of those plans is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan Update, Destination 2055. You're probably familiar with that, which does include a goal for safety. So we're working towards a consistent approach there. This safety plan, you could think about it as a way of taking the safety work and the discussion in the long range, the MTP, and pumping it up in a significant way. The data analysis, the work with engagement and talking with the community about safety is going to be much more substantial in the safety plan, but we do see a lot of opportunities for be able to form the MTP from the results of the safety plan. So if you're not familiar with the concept, Transportation Safety Plan is a visionary document, but it also requires commitment. And that's a big reason why we're talking to you all tonight, as well as all the jurisdictions in the Campo region. It is a data-driven plan that, if you're familiar with some of the work we've done so far, you've probably seen some of the graphs and charts, and there's a lot of data that goes into this that really helps inform some of the priorities and locations where we should focus. It is stakeholder-led. There's stakeholders at the agency level. We've been working through the public engagement to understand what other stakeholders have to say as well. And then I think one of the most important things to mention is this safety plan is not only a reactive looking historically at crash history and where crashes have been particularly problematic, and that's important, but it's also looking forward at what we would refer to as proactive measures. We're considering ways that risk identifies locations where crashes may or may not have occurred already, but they have the same markers of some of those serious crash locations have been in the past. It's multimodal, so all modes are considered, including vehicle drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, and then, you know, anything that basically operates on the roadway network and/or crosses that roadway network. And then it will identify a number of short-term and long-term needs. Short-term is gonna be a particularly important part of this because safety is not something that can wait for a decade or more, so there will be a primary focus on that, but also ways we can inform long-term projects. There are a number of goals. Just to hit on a couple of them, one of the overarching goal is to achieve a significant reduction in fatalities and serious injuries on the transportation system. So we aim to do that by addressing other regional efforts, incorporating into a number of other plans, identify or increasing awareness. The public engagement work happening right now, I think, is gonna go a long way of just increasing general awareness about some of the safety problems. And of course, we want to identify needs and projects that can help address some of these needs. Earlier mentioned, that Strategic Highway Safety Plan, and how we want to align with that. The HSIP acronym here stands for Highway Safety Improvement Program. That's the primary federal funding program that we want to get plugged into with some of these safety improvements, as well as US DOT discretionary grants. And then one key tenet is that we will want to follow what is referred to as a safe system approach. That's a framework for thinking about safety in a much more comprehensive way than we have historically. Another facet is that other communities in the Campo region and adjacent have also pursued Safe Streets and Roads for All, Safe Streets and Roads for All plans and grants, so we'll be coordinating with those communities to make sure that our plans are speaking the same language and also providing a consistent vision. So there's a number of agencies that you see here who have received some of those grants. All right, so a quick recap of what we've been up to so far. The first phase of the work started at the end of the calendar year last year, and so for the last eight months, we've been developing with Campo, developing a project website. There's an online survey out now. We hosted a kickoff summit. We'll... I'll provide a quick summary of that in just a moment. Back in March, we went through the region, and we met with a number of what we call TATS, Technical Advisory Team Meetings, to have meetings with those communities. So we had a number of those. We worked with Campo, and we performed... We have a whole social media program to share. We've... We're now meeting with you all and hoping to meet with all the town boards and city councils. And then we're also hosting a number of public engagement events. So if you're not familiar, the survey's out. There's a QR code that's present on posters, bookmarks, a lot of other materials. The website is posted on Campo's website, so if anybody is looking around for that survey link, please let us know. We'll be happy to share that. Back in March, there may have been one or two of you who were able to join us for a Regional Safety Summit. That's when we introduced the plan. We provided a preliminary data review. We talked about safety culture, introduced our plan engagement, our social engagement plan, and then we had a number of social or small group discussions. When we talked about safety culture, the idea is that it's both a top-down and bottom-up approach, and that means that it's not just for agency leadership to embrace and incorporate into their work, but also learning from the community, but also helping inform the community so that they can collaboratively make the best choices they can to help share responsibility and improve safety on the roadways. And the idea is that if everyone can embrace the idea that every trip and every user's life is worth saving and preserving, that we can help address some of these safety problems. So it is a joint effort of NC DOT and Campo. Both NC DOT and Campo have jointly funded this particular planning study. We're making, meeting with local elected leaders, coordinating with planners, law enforcement, emergency response, educators, just anyone who has a relationship with safety, which is really everyone. We hosted those technical advisory team meetings. The one that was in your region was hosted by Youngsville. Thank you for doing that. And we met with other Franklin County agency directors and such to just really understand from their perspective what some of the safety problems are. We've recently released a social media training and digital toolkit that includes a number of... There's a recording that Kenneth actually provided on what the safety plan is. There's the survey, posters, social media content. So if you're looking for things to push out through your social media networks, we'd strongly encourage you to take advantage of some of these resources, and there will be more throughout the plan. Local engagement events, been a lot. We've been all over, both the consulting team as well as the Campo team. Been in, I think, most of the counties at this point, and we've still got a few more events to go. And as Kenneth mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we had... We hope to be able to participate with Youngsville Night, National Night Out. The purpose of these engagement events, again, is to really engage with the community, ask them questions about what they understand about safety, talk about trade-offs, understand from any personal perspectives or experience they've had, and document, you know, what's important to them from a safety perspective. So that is a very quick overview of what we've been up to from an engagement standpoint. And, you know, I'll just pause here for just a few minutes. I know a number of you met with us back during the technical advisory team meeting and maybe have even been part of that summit that I mentioned, but I would be curious if anybody has any specific thoughts right now about any safety issues you've observed. It could be about infrastructure or behavior that's coming to your mind. I've got a notepad right at my disposal, so just take a few minutes here and love to give you guys a chance to share any thoughts you have at this point.
Do you have a stenographer?
Well, I've got a notepad.
I'm seasoned, though. We do have several. I'll just kind of defer to the commissioners right now and let them speak on anything that is front and center for them.
I'll take that one. One of the biggest challenges we have here in town, and we talked about this at our session earlier in the year, is that our downtown area is Highway 96. And so we get a ton of traffic that comes through our town, and that's regular vehicles, dump trucks, tractor-trailers, you name it. And we also have a lot of shops and things downtown that we want our pedestrians, our residents, to be able to access, and putting those together doesn't mix well. And so we've got some things that we're working on to try and get the trucks out of downtown, which is later in the meeting tonight as well. But anything we can do to, you know, help with getting, you know, unnecessary vehicle traffic out of downtown and slowing them down and making them take appropriate roads that are safe for the residents in town.
All right, thanks.
That pretty much sums it up.
Yeah, pedestrian safety is a big... Pedestrian safety in downtown is a big deal here.
Gotcha. Okay. Makes sense.
Yeah, we're a little unique here in Youngsville. And I mentioned it in a meeting earlier this week with DOT that... I'm trying to think of another town in our area where their main street is a major highway, and I really can't think of one in, probably within 100 miles, if not maybe in the state of North Carolina. So it's, again, it's unique, and trying to keep people safe is obviously goal number one. There are several factors, I think, where you guys can come in and play a huge part with that. So we're looking forward to just, you know, continuing those discussions and going from there.
All right, thanks. Well, I guess another question you just... You sort of got at this just now, but are there any characteristics about the Youngsville community that you all think really kind of stands out as being different, especially or particularly related to roadway safety? You mentioned the truck traffic on, in a downtown or urban and pedestrian context, but are there any other characteristics that you all think are particularly unique to Youngsville?
Our jurisdiction is very small, so we're limited to, you know, what's in-town limits, and for the most part, it's 35 mile per hour roads. So I'd say that's different from other, you know, cities that have the higher speed traffic. Mostly residential.
It's about all the Y intersections?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Troublesome intersections.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think I remember a discussion about intersections. When you say troublesome...
The Y intersections. They were clearly very popular about 60 or 70 years ago. Yeah.
So those Y intersections, kind of skewed intersections, I think, is something else I've heard you all mention in the past as well. Okay. Well, I have a firm suspicion that, which we don't tonight because we don't really have time to be able to get into the data, but if we were to look back at some of the data for your community, I have a feeling that a lot of the things you all mentioned would show up there. So just to recap on next steps, there's another phase to a number of these same things that I mentioned earlier. There will be a number of presentations. Later in the cycle, we will meet again with the executive board, and then there will be another summit very similar to the one that occurred back in March. No dates assigned to any of these yet, but just to kind of give you a heads up of what's coming. And then we want to meet again with the technical advisory teams, probably in the early part of next year, to talk through some of the initial strategies and recommendations. And then we'll be back for another meeting like this to talk with you all about what the plan's idea and vision is, and to talk about, you know, ways that we can engage with you all for your support to be able to make the plan a success. So the next steps in the immediate future is we're gonna dig into some other data analysis. There's a product called a High Injury Network and some risk analysis that we're performing. If you like maps, this is where the map action really gets exciting. So there's a number of that to help inform priorities and locations. We'll wrap up our public engagement effort over the next few weeks. So again, another push for that survey. If you all have an opportunity to push the survey throughout social media, please do that. The survey, I think, we're expecting to close at the end of this month. And then there will be a lot of other opportunities to get your input. So that's a quick recap. I'd encourage you all to check out the Campo website. Again, our partners with NC DOT, they've got a lot of good resources as well. And then Kenneth is the project manager for Campo. I'm the PM or the project manager for the VHB team. And thank you very much for this opportunity. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners? No, I think we're good here. Thank you so much, and I look forward to working with you here in the next couple of months.
Excellent. Thanks, y'all. Thank you again for the opportunity to join virtually.
Thank you all very much. Greatly appreciate this.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And Mir Flowers, we'll make sure to post that on our Facebook in the next few days, and they do have the bookmarks and the other handouts that were mentioned. They're available at the front office here at Town Hall, right outside on that little table, and then whoever's there can certainly assist anyone who wants to connect with and provide feedback for the survey. And Ms. Blackburn, you said that the survey's gonna close when?
I think we're shooting for the end of August, so... Yeah, push the survey.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Excellent. Thanks, y'all.
Thanks so much. Have a great night. Stay safe.
Thanks, you too.
All right, we'll move along into public hearings. Item A under public hearings is annexation petition for Holden Road Towns 2024-1. I will go ahead and open the hearing to the public as of 7:29, and turn things over for staff report.
That would be neat. This property is the one we've recently discussed. It's across from Faith Baptist Church, and they spoke with us, I believe it was a couple of months ago. But that's the property there that they are looking to annex. The signature, it's been sold a couple of times, so the signatures and the deeds are up to date and good to go. I have everything proper, so we should be good to move forward.
Okay. All right. Having said that, I'll open that up for, and again, this is for the public hearing under the annexation petition. I'll open it up from comments from the public. Anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on the annexation petition? All right, hearing is seeing none. I will go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:30, and move along into item B, which is a zoning text amendment 9.2-3, attached house building type, townhome, maximum height. Open the hearing to the public as of 7:30, and turn things over for this way, for staff... Wait a minute. Which way are we going with staff report?
I believe Planner Garcia is on my...
Hello, can you hear me okay?
I'm pivoting to the center console for the report, so please, Ms. Garcia, please let us know what you have.
All right, so this YDO amendment basically makes the maximum townhome height 40 feet. If you've seen the way that the YDO works before, for townhomes specifically, the maximum height was presented in drawing form, and this drawing was a little bit confusing to interpret. So we picked a number, 40 feet. That's industry standard for two-to-three-story townhomes, and are proposing to amend the YDO. story townhomes, and are proposing to amend the YDO to have that as the maximum height. The, I'll just say that planning staff supports the amendment because it's consistent with the comp plans' goal of eliminating barriers to construction of housing types that are accessible to a range of incomes. And townhomes are one of those middle housing options that aren't single family homes. The lots aren't as big. And I'll also say that at the last planning board meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend that y'all approve this. So, any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners? Nope, I think we're good. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Having heard that report, I will open up for comments from the public in relation to zoning text amendment 9.2-3. Do I see or hear any comments from the public? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will go ahead and close that hearing as of 7:32 and will move along into item C, zoning text amendment, Article 12, off-street parking, stacking, and loading areas, Table 12 dot 1. I will open the hearing to the public as of 7:33 and turn things over for a staff report.
Okay, this amendment updates the parking maximums for what I'll call extra-large retail stores. So stores with over 50,000 square feet. In the YDO, there's a table of parking minimums that ensures that destinations have sufficient parking to serve their clientele. However, we recognize that retail stores that are greater than 50,000 square feet, so this isn't your Publix or your Harris Teeter or regular grocery stores. This is extra-large grocery stores or chain supermarkets or home goods suppliers. And they're going to design large parking lots, whether or not the town requires this. And so there's something to be said for the, there's a difference between requiring one spot per 350 square feet of a small retail store versus a larger or an extra-large one. So this amendment eliminates the parking minimum for the extra-large retail stores and also creates a maximum of one spot per 350 square feet. This just decreases regulations where they aren't needed. And also, it caps large parking lot sizes. So there wouldn't be a parking lot in Youngsville that exceeds 500 spaces. Yes. So the planning board also unanimously voted to accept this. They did ask me to add in some more specificity with the language on the table. I previously said not to exceed 500, but they asked for me to add not to exceed 500 spaces. But they were okay with the numbers and the the goal of this amendment, which is just to increase the the amount of usable land that there is in Youngsville. Those extra-large parking lots, they tend to take up lots of land that could be used for myriad of other things. But let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Do I hear any questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. I'll go ahead and open this up for comments from the public. Not seeing or hearing any comments from the public, I will go ahead and close that public hearing as of 7:35 and move into citizens' comments. I think we had one person that signed up, Madam Clerk, Mr. Rizzo?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and Town Administration. It's a privilege to be speaking with you. As you all know, right, I represent Youngsville's first, and let's hope only pedestrian Main Street casualty since our downtown improvement project began. First, I owe apologies. Earlier this week, I presented a plea to the County Board of Commissioners to ask for assistance in our traffic crisis. While I mention Mr. Page by name, I'm reminded that we're all in this together. I want to thank the board, the mayor, and all of the town staff for the hard work and dedication you show this community. Your efforts should not go unnoticed. And next month, I'll go on record to the county to present, among other things, some gratitude that I didn't express Monday. As promised though, last month tonight, I am going to present some updates on the work that I'm doing personally to make streets safer. Over the course of the last several weeks, I've begun a comprehensive planning process outlined in part by Slower Street, a how-to guide for pop-up traffic calling, to investigate some options for pedestrian safety. Success criteria include setting a clear, measurable set of goals for what we hope to achieve with our traffic calming efforts. I've begun personally engaging with stakeholders in this process, including reaching out to neighbors on the north Main Street block, where I am closest to in proximity, as well as local businesses and community leaders to gather input and build support for potential initiatives. I've gone door-to-door in my community, gathering survey data on the public perception of neighborhood safety. I'm joined by some of my survey responders here. And I've received very supportive feedback from neighbors and local businesses like North Cross Street Station and the Cross Street Barber Shop, both of whom have established and noted to me that they and their patrons suffer, just like I have, and just like my neighbors do, from the heightened dangers of the cross-street feeders looking to beat the stoplight at Cross and Main, going both north and south into and out of our community. Instrumental in this community engagement process is working with stakeholders in the town of Youngsville, first responder community, as well as the Board of Commissioners and the administration. Along with going door-to-door with leave-behind surveys and having face-to-face conversations with my neighbors, to foster a sense of ownership and collaboration for safety measures, I've also been in communication with and hope to have ongoing collaborations alongside Mr. Page, Captain Moxy, and Captain Lemmons, as well as Chief Whitley. These gentlemen have been extremely helpful, so supportive, thoughtful, and engaging. And frankly, I can't thank them enough. There's no shock here, guys. We have some amazing humans representing the interests of the town council. I've often worked towards gaining a technical understanding and assistance, not just with white papers and book study, which I'm prone to. But as mentioned, I've also presented our plight to the county. I've had conversations with Josh Helen of the NC DOT, who represents our district. I just spoke today with the UNC Highway Safety Research Center. And I've put out an initial request for engagement with Trailnet, who authored the white paper that I'd like hopefully all of you guys to read at some point, as well as Vision Zero Network and other agencies germane to our cause. This month, I also hope to present to the Campo Executive Committee and write a statement of purpose illustrating in detail the pain that we suffer in this town. That was a pretty good presentation. I have some thoughts on that as well. I've also begun making a detailed account of how to create various traffic calming measures using low-cost materials that will be instrumental in calming neighborhood traffic. I've prepared a brief three-part presentation that I'm hoping to engage all of you on, as well as the first responder community and town administration. In summary, the three parts are the safety challenges that we face on our streets, including but not limited to visual evidence, some of which I would like to offer the town attorney, so that we can start monetizing some of these ordinance violations. I've also, in the second part, illustrated low-cost, high-yield traffic calming options, as outlined, not just by our own traffic calming policy, but also Slower Streets, a how-to guide for public calming traffic, and a tactical urbanist guide to materials and design. Lastly, in this summary, I detailed a plan for investigating, analyzing, and implementing measures to make the neighborhood streets safer. As I continue to scour for external resources, including grants and private funding, I'd like to work with you guys, the town administration, and Campo on impact ideas. And it would be an honor and a privilege to have an agenda item at some point soon, for the town's record, to present some of the research that I've conducted and that I intend to conduct in tandem with the interests of the community to work towards neighborhood safety. Thank you for your time and consideration as a community champion for neighborhood streets. Safety, I hope that you would consider me an asset. I'm glad to go door-to-door with a stack of Campo survey bookmarks and ask people to take the survey. I'm happy to ask Campo, they'll give us an extended runway to collect survey data. I am more than happy to replicate their survey and have it door-to-door on my own iPad. So whatever I can do to be helpful for the initiatives, including but not limited to an agenda item, to get on the record and demonstrate community activism, I'd like to do so. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Do we have anyone in attendance who maybe did not sign up that have any citizens' comments? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll move along into item seven, which is the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board in regards to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request to pull item L from the consent agenda.
Okay, that sounds good. We can do that. And actually, if that's the only thing, any commissioners have any issues with that? Madam Clerk, do you want to put that in as a motion to remove it as an amended consent agenda?
Yes, please.
A move to remove item L from the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item L is removed from the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda. And then we'll just put item L in with new business. Does that work with you? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got an approved consent agenda there. Moving in to item eight, which is old business. A is the annexation ordinance 2024-1 for Holden Road Towns. Excuse me. Action requested here is to approve annexation ordinance 2024-1.
Move to approve annexation ordinance.
Second. All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And then we'll move along into item nine. And since we pulled item L, the resolution supporting the removal of truck route designation from Youngsville's Main Street, we'll put that in first under new business. Mr. Page, did you have anything that you needed to add to this particular item?
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to give the background and summary for it?
That sounds amazing. That's why I'm pouring it to you. And it's also because you're a cool guy. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. In 2019, the board directed the previous town administrator, Phil Portiero, to email NC DOT's traffic engineer asking for trucks to be rerouted from Youngsville's Main Street. There were other communications calls and emails on the interim. On Wednesday, January 17th of 2024, Brian Mayhew, the state traffic engineer, met with Mayor Flowers, Mayor Prince Emporio Brain, and staff. We walked Main Street and observed the volume of truck traffic. Mr. Mayhew said that he would follow up with the town to investigate. On Tuesday, May 7th of 2024, Brian Mayhew came to Youngsville Town Hall and delivered the attached options. He stated that the town need to bear the cost to make all the requests to have any designation of Highway 96 changed. There were five options presented, and the board unanimously adopted the US-1 and Highway 98 option. NC DOT has requested the town begin the process of removal of the truck traffic from Main Street through a resolution, and asked the town to spearhead the effort to request adoption by the other local effective governments, namely Wake Forest, Franklin County, and Windhammy. The adoption of the resolution tonight would start that process, and staff would then subsequently request that the resolution be passed by the other neighboring jurisdictions.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? I would certainly hope there are none. Okay, having heard that, are there any questions for Mr. Page? All right, hearing none. What's in front of us is a resolution supporting the removal of truck route designation from Youngsville's Main Street. Do I hear a motion to approve and move forward said resolution, move to approve resolution?
Second.
All right, got a first, second, and a third. Is there any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that sounded, any nays? Because that sounded unanimous. I hope it would be. All right. Item A, fiscal year 2025 budget amendment number one, an assistant town manager position. Action requested here is to approve amendment and authorize position. Mr. Page, did you have anything that you wanted to add to this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The town of Youngsville received an updated tax rule from the county, which indicated property tax revenues, which will increase anticipated incomes by $150,000. The initial budget for tax revenue was, excuse me, $3 million received by property taxes. And this updates the bill of tax rule to $3,158,107. As such, this amendment does not have a tax increase. It is only with our existing revenues. It would also create a new administrative position and assistant town manager with a pay rate of $95,000 a year, and allocate an additional $26,500 to a police department vehicle outfit.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? All right, action requested here is to approve amendment and authorize position. Do I hear a motion?
Okay. Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote?
What would be this individual's job?
So I had three things that I had identified as their out-of-the-game projects. The first would be to spend some time digging into the personnel policy. It's one of those things that has a bunch of holes in it. Attorney Barbara Jones and I have actually been working on a policy hole this week that was brought to us by Chief Whitley. The bypass has so many pieces that I am trying to keep track of all of them. And it would move faster if there was somebody else to service backup for that. And then lastly, it would allow me to take some time off from time to time, rather than always being on call.
Any additional discussion? All right, we got a first and a second. I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All four?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right. That sounded unanimous as well. Item B, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The action requested here is to approve plan as proposed. Apparently, we've got a presentation that I wasn't aware of, but Ms. McCollum, you've got the floor.
Yes, my name is Allison Clark. For state programs, but also help us in budgeting and creating. I'd also like to thank Chris Sarnum, associate. He served as the lead planner for this project and spent a lot of time developing this plan. Before Chris started on the plan, we established a steering committee. The committee was made up of nine individuals, ranging from town staff to residents to people involved in our community events, adult and youth recreation sports leagues. The committee members were Mason Hert, Bryce Hamblin, Curtis Gregg, Mayor Flowers, Commissioner Brain, Chris Brum, Magnum Page, Lucy Garcia, and myself. Thank you to the steering committee members for volunteering their time for this plan. Tonight, we do have a couple steering committee members here. Everybody, Curtis Brum, Bryce Hamblin, if it's a few of you guys, I'd ask them to come and speak for about a minute or two on what this plan means to them and what they're most excited for. So, Curtis, do you want to say?
Good evening. My name is Curtis Gregg, and I have been involved with Youngsville Parks and Rec for 16-plus years, all the way from kids playing T-ball to adult sports to now officiate for the town on a lot of, for a lot of sporting events. Whenever I was approached and asked to do this, to be a part of the steering committee, I agreed wholeheartedly, thinking we were going to push more baseball, 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 baseball games. We need more fields, need more places to play baseball, and like that. And as I got involved with this, because here's what I would do. Everybody come play baseball here, but you can go to Wake Forest to do everything else. As we start getting involved in this, and I start seeing and hearing the comments and realizing, why would I send someone to Wake Forest or Franklinton whenever we could have it all here? So this plan that we've come up with, that has been about to be presented to you guys, is that, is we don't have to send people to Wake Forest or Franklin. We can keep it all here. And so I'm excited about this plan, about the whole master idea of a recreational center, different multipurpose fields, and everything like that. So, so, listen, be encouraged, because we could keep this here in Youngsville, and we could make our community even better because we have more stuff in the town. and we could make our community even better because we have more stuff in the town.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
It's fine with you guys, Bryce is going to go first.
Sure, that'd be fine.
This is all you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for the opportunity to present to you tonight the Youngsville Park and Recreation Master Plan. And really, the bottom there makes it, you know, what we're trying to do is truly leave a lasting legacy and build a legacy in Youngsville around parks and recreation within the community. Next slide. Looks like it changed on us there. Do you want me to try and share my screen, or can you pull up the PDF?
What's going on with our colors team tonight, man?
Might not have some fonts installed.
Just blame it on Debbie, it's all Debbie's fault.
That's right. Would you like me to try and share?
Sure, have at it.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Yeah, so we have blue instead of green now, I think, so.
That's better said for sure.
Thank you again for the opportunity to present this to you tonight. I want to give a high-level overview of our meaningful engagement process, inventory and analysis, and then the recommendations that we have set forth in the plan, and then how we can phase and implement this plan moving forward. So, the meaningful engagement process started with a community survey. We had over a hundred and seventy-six participants, which is really amazing and just a testament to how engaged your community is there in Youngsville. We had, if you look at it per capita, that's over seven percent of the population took the survey, which is tremendous. I've been doing this a long time, and we don't usually get over two percent, so just kudos to you for that. We also had the opportunity to engage people one-on-one with a community open house, where we had various hands-on activities, one-word exercises, as well as had the opportunity to speak to individuals on a one-on-one basis. Through that, we were able to develop guiding principles for the plan. And those six principles are as follows. We want to foster an attitude of excellence, engage and encourage the next generation, community placemaking that brings people together, create multimodal connections between places, safety and enjoyment for all ages and abilities, and then ensure the plan is implemented. After that, we were able to look at an inventory and analysis of each of your two existing parks. And so, as you look through the plan, both parks have a one-page spread that give you all the statistics and the current existing conditions there of the park. We also wanted to take a look at potential future parklands throughout the community. And we landed on four potential opportunities. The first one being the Park Avenue Project just north of downtown. The second one is along Tarvera Road, and that's just east of downtown. Number three would be the National Guard Armory in downtown. And we also want to include the piece for future planning purposes that is adjacent to Luddy Park. And then the Faith Youngsville property that abuts Luddy Park to the south as well. We then took a look at benchmarking to see how your community compares to other communities across the country. And we did that by utilizing the National Recreation and Park Association's guide that they put out every year where they take a hundred different communities across the country and provide a benchmark for others to look at. So, a few of those items, if we look at those parks per capita, so you have two parks existing and one potential future park. And based on your population per capita, Youngsville should have just under two parks, so you're definitely meeting the need there. However, when you look at the acres per capita, you have about eleven point five acres of existing, and then there's potential of twenty-seven acres if we look at a new park facility. Looking at the national average, you should have about thirty-one acres for Youngsville, so about thirteen acres per one thousand people. So, you fall just a little bit short, but if you add the new facility that we'll talk about here shortly, then you'll definitely be exceeding that average. From an operating cost and budgeting standpoint, this fiscal year, you had three hundred and eighty-eight thousand just north of that for your budgetary expenditures. If you look at national averages, you would need about two hundred and ninety thousand for Youngsville. But it's important that you look at all the different activities and functions that the Parks and Recreation Department does, not only in Park and Rec, but in events and town planning. And then also, just the excellent quality of programming that you guys put on. And if you look at the lower quartile of peer communities, less than twenty thousand, that lower quartile, they actually have about a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar operating budget. To keep that in mind as we look at those numbers. From a staffing standpoint, you have two full-time and eight part-time or seasonal. If you look at, again, the national average, you would need two point seven six, so three people would be what we're looking for. We also looked at all the outdoor and indoor facilities that you currently have and compared that to the national average per capita. And putting together the meaningful engagement and the benchmarking, we move into the recommendations. Each of the existing parks, we have recommendations for and have a conceptual plan of where those items could go. Luddy Park, some of the primary activities here around Field One would be to try and build some stadium seating on that large slope, provide some much-needed shade to the new tot lot that was opened recently, also provide shade with legacy oak trees or shade trees throughout the park. There in the middle, between Field One and Two, we would look to create a more centralized restroom concessions and storage building, and the other various recommendations moving forward. Irene Mitchell Park is just such a hidden gem with great opportunity. So, we looked at completely reimagining this space, but also making sure that we keep as many of the existing large oak trees within the site. So, we would feature a large central lawn, walking trails throughout, small loops for walking. We would utilize some of the topography in that number three, the orange area, for a small playground or some hillside slides. And then have a large picnic pavilion that could also as a small event or public announcement location for the community. The first of two new park concepts is the Park Avenue Conceptual Plan. This plan is actually at one of the Y intersections that VHB is looking into for you. It also, on the eastern side there to the right of the detention pond, is the proposed S-line location. But this park would feature in the number one in red, a large recreation center. In the orange there, it would also feature a large inclusive playground. The championship field A would be an artificial turf facility. And then you would have two other fields that would be natural lawn. And this would be primarily geared towards field sports. We already are doing a wonderful job with the baseball, but field sports, we could go a long way in providing this, and these fields will accommodate not only soccer, but they would accommodate lacrosse, field hockey, and full-size football. Park number two is the Tarvera Road Park. One of the primary features or potential benefits of this park facility is the number three in that main roadway boulevard. We would have the opportunity to go ahead and construct some of the proposed bypass for Youngsville. And those bypasses are looking at alignment alternatives number two and three on your current existing plans. It would also feature to the right there of the boulevard, a large indoor recreation center. Now, we would have a championship field that would, again, assume to be artificial turf, and then a parking lot associated with it. To the western side of this site, we are able to accommodate numerous walking trails and paths, three additional field sport fields, some concessions and restroom buildings, as well as an inclusive playground and pickleball area. When comparing the two parks, both of them feature a large community recreation center that will be just under twenty-two thousand square feet under root. And eighty-five percent of our survey respondents stated that a multipurpose recreation center was the highest priority if funding were available. Inclusive playgrounds were also another key item for people. Fifty-one percent of survey respondents stated that a large inclusive playground was their highest priority if funding were available, and that was ranked third in that survey question. So, both parks feature a large inclusive playground of various sizes. And these are images, inspiration images, to the right of what those elements could look like in Youngsville. They also both feature walking trails, so the number one overall activity the individual respondents wanted to do was walking. The Park Avenue concept has just under a half a mile loop. And then the Tarvera Road Park has almost a mile loop on the west side, and then a quarter of a mile loop on the right. And those are just kind of your primary pathways. You can make a much larger loop with both of these if you choose. And then, both of them feature multipurpose fields throughout. We also took a look at connectivity. And while the twenty fifty Youngsville plan, as well as the twenty fifteen Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan show routes all throughout the community, we wanted to target what had the most impact to Park and Recreation within the next, you know, five to ten years. And so, we looked at item A, which is the Youngsville Connector running up and down Youngsville Boulevard, which could be a great shared-use path. The Richland Creek Greenway, which is represented with item B there, that would be a great connection that could also go down into the town of Wake Forest. We looked at the Haddles Branch Spur, which is item C. And then the Holden Road Shared Use Path, which is item D. And these four proposed trail segments would create a three-point-two-five mile loop. But more importantly, they connect most of your current infrastructure, being the Town of Youngsville Branch Library, the Town of Youngsville Town Hall, and then Youngsville Elementary School, would all be connected by this to neighborhoods as well as the school system. We looked at the twenty fifty plan and the recommended typical sections, and took these and made our shared-use path a twelve-foot preferred but ten-foot minimum. So, this is one recommendation that's a little bit different than the twenty fifty plan, which says that they would like a twelve-foot minimum. So, we're looking at a ten-foot minimum. We also took and looked at several different greenway typical sections, and the preferred section would be a concrete section for our greenway. And then, alternative could be to use an asphalt section or a natural surface cross-section with an optional ribbon curb on either side to help minimize issues with asphalt edges crumbling and contain the natural surface to prevent some erosion. And as mentioned, at the completion of these, right, these four trails segments, we can have three-point-two-five mile loop realized, but also, we can connect almost a quarter of Youngsville just by these four primary trails and groups. From an operations side, we recommend hiring two additional full-time staff. The Park and Rec is doing an amazing job with limited staff. And just to make sure that we can maintain the current facilities at a high level, continue to set Youngsville above peer communities, we want to look at hiring one staff member as a Main Street and Events Coordinator that can not only work for Parks and Rec, but also planning and town administration, and then one additional grounds crew. And it's important to note that these are before you need, before the implementation or development of a new park facility. So, once those new facilities came online, we would need to look at having additional staff for that. And then, we also recommend increasing the operating budget by about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. A majority of that, about three-quarters of that budget increase, would be primarily dedicated to staffing, and then the remainder would go to purchasing new field equipment or replacing some aging infrastructure. From the phasing and implementation standpoint, so how do we begin? Well, first off, it's important that we have some important consistency statements. So, I'm not going to read these, I know that, I don't want to take up too much time, but start out with a consistency statement and then a commitment statement. I think it's important that we develop a complete streets resolution, and I think the previous Campo presentation kind of alludes to this as well and could be a great tandem between one another. But then also making sure that every project from then on follows that complete street resolution, and also that NCDOT follows the complete streets resolution that they have and that you potentially will adopt. And then, look at a catalyst project. And so, the one recommended is the Youngsville Connector Shared Use Path, because it has the greatest potential to be a catalyst for a community-wide network of trails and pathways. Recommended phasing, we came up with thirty different recommendations and gave them a timeline of either a short-term, medium-term, or a long-term. And then, it's very important that we look at And then it's very important that we look at partnerships and strategic partnerships and funding opportunities. So we can't do this alone, um, and we need to, to continue to foster relationships that you already have. But also build new ones, um, trying to expand uh our reaches of park and recreation. To aid with going after grants. Um, so not only will this document help you uh in writing grants and seeking grant funding. But also a menu of planning level boss will help to put together, you know, a quick opinion of probable cause. So that you can ensure that you're asking for enough money um when you're going after various grants uh for different projects. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Alyssa. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Looks amazing.
And you did a great job.
Sure.
I'm ex- I'm excited for the Fonzie Dome. That's gonna be awesome.
That, that little playground.
No, there's not gonna be a playground. It's gonna be an amazing little turtle chill thing. I've seen that.
Rush more than.
I love it.
Um, well, originally, when we first moved down here as a family, we were in Wake Forest in Cimarron Division. Uh, which has exploded since. We lived there for nine years, moved away for seven and came back in twenty twenty-one to move to Youngsville, which. At that time, uh, felt like forever. It felt like Virginia, uh, based on where we were in Cimarron. Um, Youngsville's exploded since that time, and uh I actually came across Alyssa's email from generic email for Parks and Rec. And was very thankful to be included um from her invitation to join the committee. Um, I came across a uh, a call for proposals for RIS Trail Network for uh grant funding. And she said, well, we can't really apply for that grant, but you can get involved in this other way. And so uh she just asked me to, to speak for a minute about kind of what I was most excited about uh for this project. And I think really the connectivity of the plan. And uh we've been talking a lot tonight uh about uh what brings Youngsville together and uh enhancing safety. And I think that uh adding uh sidewalks and trails and uh just enhancing that connectivity, which by the way is almost uh or just over a five K. Anybody's uh having to uh run a five K at any point in the future. Um, and so I think that would be a, a huge uh benefit to the community to see people and, and greeting one another as they walk on the trails. Uh, in the mornings and at night, maybe at, at midday. So that's a thing that I'm most excited about. So thanks.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else you want to add?
Nothing at all? Congratulations. That is, it was, that was uh, that was a lot, and clearly there was a lot of uh. A lot of thoughts and ideas that went into it, and I would also like to thank uh everyone who joined the committee to, to help provide input on that, so um. If there is no other questions, comments, or concerns.
Um, I reached out to staff earlier this week. Um, it's great. I love it. I would, I would look into if we could, um. And I think Chris actually reached back out to us about this. Um, in Franklin County already, the Dill Webb neighborhood has greenway connectivity there. As well as Timberlake Preserve, which we annexed in, has a greenway path there, so we could connect from. We just need like a piece from post office to Timberlake Preserve. Or to Tom Williams right there. Does it all, when he goes all the way to Tom Williams? And then just from the end of that neighborhood down, and it would connect us into the. I don't want to say which one it is, which greenway, but it's one, it's a already formed greenway that would take you all the way through traditions and out into rolls. With existing greenway pathway.
Is that news? I don't, I can't remember if that's.
And it's.
River Trail or not. That thing's, that thing is massive.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's weird. It like connects into that like traditions like Forest Neighborhood, and then that connects down and around into another, like it kind of, they did kind of roll down through there. That might be it. Dunn Creek, maybe?
Smith Creek, I don't know, something like.
Smith Creek, yeah. They like connect in all, it goes through like thirty parks and stuff, and I was like, it would. It might be a good thing to look at. I know Chris looked at it and he mentioned what we would have to per- like, get as far as right away through it would be. Um, but it's the, pretty much the only place in town that we already have a. Greenway path that's already paved and sitting there for a quarter mile of it, maybe. I mean, it's a piece of it.
So maybe the direction would be for our consultant to come up with whether that one should be higher priority or equal priority. Or lesser priorities, because of the options to the greenway connector that was outlined here. And then put that in the list of recommendations and update the map to show that additional greenway on.
Sounds great.
I can say as a runner who's been running in the same five-mile radius for two decades. Uh, it would be lovely to be able to connect to anything that also is a sidewalk, so I don't get run over, so that'd be awesome.
I think we've.
Totally on board.
I think we've had a vision for a while, yeah, and it's something that, that I always envisioned, not only being able to walk with kids to school when they were younger and went to the elementary school. But now that Landon is a little bit older, he can hop on his bicycle, he can ride his bicycle to Luddy Park for practice. But I would like for that to be an opportunity for everyone. We've got existing sidewalks where he can do that. But as far as like a trail goes, I love the, the Moose River Trail. The Smith Creek is really cool, too. Um, so yeah, I'm excited about all the things, the Fonzie Dome, the soccer fields, all that stuff is, is gonna be amazing, so um. No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that's, that's gonna happen. It's gonna be a thing. Um, so again, the action requested here is to approve plan as proposed.
Wow.
You seen it?
I would go for it.
Let's figure that out.
So it's a great question. Um, with the plan in place, we're more competitive for federal funds and state grants. The party will not fund something like what we're asking for here without a plan already in place. So this will allow us to even acquire property for a future park because we have this plan document now in place. We do anticipate a much larger portion of this being funded with grants than some of our other stuff that we're looking for. Um, it's just, there's more money for parks than there is for a lot of the other things. Um, in most cases, I've seen fifty-fifty matches for park um infrastructure in pieces, so we should be able to see those. The, it is also not a tomorrow plan. It is a long-term plan. It may be fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years for this to be recognized. And all of that, of course, might have to come before the board before any dollars are allocated towards it.
So this is not spending, man, it's just a plan.
Right, yes, sir. And Mr. Mayor, I believe it would be to amend the plan, uh, excuse me, approve the plan.
amended plan, yeah. And that's with Commissioner Percy's input. Is that, just, just for the record, Madam Clerk, is that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the amended plans?
I move to approve the amended plan.
Okay, all right. And we got a first and a second there. All right. Now, any discussion before we move to vote? No more discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Um, item C zoning text amendment nine dot two dash three attached housing building type, town hall maximum height. Uh, action request here is to approve amendment as proposed. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve amendment, sir.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That is also unanimous. Uh, item D zoning text amendment, article twelve, all-street parking, stacking, and loading areas, table twelve dot one. The action request here is to approve amendment as proposed. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners?
Yes, approve the. What is that?
So, um, this one would. Put a cap on the maximum number of parking spaces for our really large retailers. So if a Target or uh a Lowe's or a Walmart or a Costco wanted to come here, their parking lot would be limited to not be a seat.
Yeah, he said the planning board approved an amendment not to exceed five hundred spaces. That's, that's right. Yeah. All right, uh, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, again, the action request here is to approve amendment as proposed. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve amendment as proposed.
Sir.
All right, got a first, second, and a third. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That is also unanimous. Uh, reports on the business. I get to go first. Unfortunately, I cannot attend Summerfest because my wife planned a vacation six months ago. Not knowing when Summerfest was gonna be, I hear it was amazing, uh, and hopefully it wasn't too hot. Um, I know where I was vacationing, it rained the entire time, so I would have preferred being here, but you know, it is what it is. Um, we had a really good meeting, at least I felt like, uh, with DOT on Monday, uh, to discuss some of the, the crosswalk visibility issues and, and safety. Um, so I, I like the engagement on their part. Looking forward to some of the ideas that, that they had. And, and hopefully, hopefully we can get implemented sooner rather than later. Um. The North Carolina League of Municipalities hosted, I forget the actual name of the meeting yesterday, but it was, the morning session was for newly elected officials. Uh, and the second meeting was just talking about some of the roles and responsibilities, but um, I had to take it. A long time ago when I first became mayor. I know these two fine gentlemen right here ran it yesterday. Um, it's good for anyone who is in an official position. To go through that because it's eye-opening and also serves as a really good refresher for those of us that have been around for a while. So um, had a great time doing that, and I was happy that the Town of Youngsville could host that. And kind of again, show off some of the things that we have to offer here in town. Um, and lastly, obviously, we've had a very rough day today with Debbie. She's messed up our slideshows and all sorts of things. Um, I always want to commend our, our police and fire and EMS for response times. But I get, I gotta give a special shout-out to our Streets and Maintenance Department. Cause those cats were on it all day today, cleaning out drainage pipes and drains ditches to make sure of that stuff, because it would dump a lot of rain out here today. To get that off of these roads and, and ditches as quickly as possible, so um. When you see Randy and staff, please let them know that it was duly noted and very much appreciated, so um. I will not be able to make the sesquicentennial meeting tomorrow, because I'll be in uh Winston-Salem, so um. Whatever you guys decide on, I'll be supportive of. So, Mr. Vice Chair, you'll be running that meeting. Um, that's it for me. Uh, Commissioner Redd.
I will be at the sesquicentennial meeting. I have nothing further, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Percy.
Um, it'll be right before our next meeting, September seventh. Um, Home Slice is having a barbecue cook-off. Um, I think me, Mayor Fonzie's, and Mayor Pro temp Bream are all gonna be judges in it. Um, and Chief Whitely, I was like, there was one more. I knew there was.
It's so sad having to just go eat barbecue all day.
It, they did it last year. It was a good time. Um, I'm sure it'll be a good time again this year.
I hope they don't give me the smallest trophy to give out this year, though. They give, they have a little pick, man, anyway. Sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean this. I'm not.
That's all I've got for.
All right, uh, Commissioner Brain.
All right, um, Summerfest was great. Uh, the weather was a lot better than, than last year. Uh, it wasn't a hundred degrees. Um, everybody I talked to was having a great time. I actually had time to make it around to all the, the booths this time. Um, so that, that was great and looking forward to more events in the fall. You mentioned the barbecue cook-off. Um, there was no campo meeting in July. Uh, that's typical. Uh, the next one is in two weeks. Commissioner Redd, are you available to attend that one?
Check my calendar.
That's twenty-first, I believe. I will be out of state for work. Um, and uh, and um, just uh reinforce what Mayor Flowers said, we had a good meeting with DOT on Monday. And uh, had some conversations afterwards that I think will be positive for uh safety downtown, some issues we're looking at, so. Uh, really hope we can get, get some of that move. That's all I've got.
All right, Commissioner Wiggins.
I've just got a question. Could you give us an update on what is happening at the intersection?
Absolutely. Uh, so, not much. Um.
I understand that.
It's been a little messy the past week or so.
As y'all are aware, they promised us that they would be done by July first. They said July first. They said July first. They said July first. And then they bumped to um October first, most recently. I think they're supposed to be wrapping up sometime in September. Of course, that overlaps now with Youngsville Elementary, it already has, and will overlap with Youngsville Elementary, Wake Pratt, Youngsville Academy. And uh Cedar Creek Middle School, which.
And High School.
Yeah, and Franklinton High School, which means that that intersection is one that we ought to find alternate routes for a while. Um, in, in C D O T's defense, they were not the ones who made the um. The delay between when they first got here and then when they came back, that was beyond their control. Um, but they still probably should have had it buttoned up by this time. Now, they had great weather to work for the beginning part of, I guess, the last part of July. And then the last few weeks, um, it's been really hard to do anything. Um, and I, I was gonna talk more about that during my part with the Public Works Department and mowing, but it's um. The, the Public Works Department skipped mowing today. It, it was on their schedule, the Motown Hall, amongst other things. Um, and instead they went around and cleaned out drains all day long, and as Mayor Flowers said, um, they were really running. And um, our deputy town clerk, Ms. Boz Adams, posted a bunch of pictures of them. The one that we decided not to post was the one where Tracy pulled a dead snake out from one of the culverts. Um, we didn't want people getting nightmares. Please don't play culverts, but you don't need to be worried about walking by them or anything. Like, don't stick your hands in them, no matter what you uh may, may think would be a good idea. But it also shows the caliber of the person who's working on a lot of those projects with, with as much rain as we have. So that was a long way to the well, uh, Commissioner Wiggins, but they have told us that they will be done by October first.
I know I, I don't have an ultimate route. I'm right in the middle of town, and every morning I pull up there, there's fifteen to twenty guys standing around. Nobody's doing anything. I ask, what are they doing? As I come home in the afternoon, and nothing's been done. So I wonder what they've done all day. It just seems to be standing still.
I can shoot them an email. I know they're not allowed to start work until after rush hour. I believe they're only allowed to work from nine AM to two PM, but I will check in and get back with you.
Okay, well, they're here at seven, so they're, they're fine for two hours.
All right, anything else, Commissioner Wiggins?
Oh, that's about all I've got.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Katie Barber Jones.
No public business to report.
All right, and then I'll turn it over to staff. Do you have anything else you want to add? Mr. Page?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, quickly, um, just uh again, thanks to the Public Works Department for what they did, and especially to the Police Department. Who was working all day and night, and they served while we were in bed, listening to the rain, wondering what the day was gonna be like. They were out there on the streets, moving uh street barriers, checking staff, reporting closures to emergency room stuff and, and such. Um, and then to Carson and Lucy for all of their impressive work on Summerfest. Um, and then Emily and Robbie for serving as the videographer and the uh sesquicentennial staff for that event. Um, next month, I will not be able to be here, but there should be a hotspot analysis and a lap update of local administered. Project.
Local administered planning project.
For the, for, thank you, you have a, for the bypass. Um, I jumped on a call recently with Lucy and a number of people from NCDOT and Tampa, talking about how. We can get our bypass project to a place where we'll be able to apply for federal funds in October of next year.
Okay.
Um, and then uh as uh Commissioner Percy and Mayor Flowers are aware, the group of them through a meeting. On the interlock with the county are going to meet again in a couple of weeks and will have a discussion. Um, to, to bring that interlevel to the next step.
All right, sounds great. Uh, any additional uh staff reports that we need here?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. No, sir.
All right. Oh, once, gone twice. Okay, hearing none. Uh, there is no need to go into closed session. So it's that uh wonderful time of the meeting to, to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All right, I was gonna say, guys, don't maybe call. Okay, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Better not be. All right.